Community development, particularly Sam and Jamie, spend a lot of time working with clients, whether it be residential and neighborhoods in scope, whether it be commercial, whether it be industrial, and they keep doing the same thing over and over and over and over again. And when we add in Brandon, a historical component, you know, some of these grants that Main Street may be getting, they can actually use on private property. We would never have the ability to do that, but we certainly want to have some input as to what those facades might be on buildings, that kind of thing. So, I'd like to work with Jamie to develop a design booklet, book, if you would, a storybook, of what our, the board's expectations are to developers when they come into Brandon. This would be a document that he would create and take it to the Planning Commission and bring to us to make sure that it suits your needs, or if you see any deficiencies in that before we move forward with that. I think it's a much need, much needed thing, and we would include it in our comp plan as well. And number eight, consideration to approve a task order number two in a general services agreement between Wagner Engineering and the City of Brandon. So, this is something else that I think we need to include in the conference of plan is an overall flood study of the entire city of Brandon. They've done a lot of work throughout Rankin County. They have a good analysis of that, and we can apply it strictly to Brandon and some places. I wanted to have a work session earlier this evening, board, and I just couldn't get it assembled in time to show you some of the work that's been done above and below Luckney Road and off of Old 471. And now we'll shift to other places like 463, Winsong, Burnham Road. We've got some places we need to make repairs up there and make some improvements to our drainage system. So, those are those. All right, Mr. Baker, you got a question on something?
Mr. Mary Ann, is it, with your permission, may we reword five and six to, I think five, better worded, maybe would be approve application to Delta Regional Authority for a grant to locate asbestos cement pipe, and then six would be to approve an application with Delta Regional Authority for a grant for a water well on Star Brandon Road?
Mm-hmm. That's it.
Would that clarify it a little better?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mary Ann.
Board, do we have any questions on those? That somewhat makes sense to you? Design standards, and now, I want to tell you, there's another application coming. They haven't opened it yet. They were going to be making application to EDA, Economic Development Authority. There's a possibility there that we can also get some more funding for another water well or this water well if this one doesn't pan out. So, anytime there's an opportunity to reach, we're going to reach for those, you know, for those dollars out there. So, I think it behooves us to do that. It's not, we've got a good system. It's strong, our water system in particular, but I think every opportunity we have to modernize it even more, we're ahead of the game, and we need to take every opportunity we can to do that. All right. Is there a motion to approve those eight requests?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Mr. Dave Ferris. Any further discussion or question? All right. I don't have the EDA yet, but we'll get to work on that. And some of this, board, we will be embedding in our next, I will, I'll just, some of this. I had a question earlier about these might be some expensive things, and if necessary, we'll embed those into our next FY budget, which we'll be talking about in two weeks. So, got a motion and second. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, board, I've got information I shared with you concerning a handout that Supervisor Brad Calhoun had given me. It's this thing with, looks like a yellow sticky on here. This was something that Mr. Calhoun visited me, with me, maybe three, maybe possibly four weeks ago, about some plans they have to, that they wanted to look at moving a recycling center, animal shelter dumpsters, and taking all that stuff to E-Smart Drive. Now, it was a short conversation, and I said, the number one concern before anything went any further was some evaluation of the sewer lines on there. So, that's the yellow sticky that's still on there. I still have the original that Supervisor Calhoun brought me, and I subsequently made a copy of that, which you have, and I gave it to Matthew Miller to begin analysis on the sewer lines. In that area, I've shown you this once before, there are four sanitary sewer lines. One of those is steel clay pipe that come from downtown Brandon. I think, add it up, I think there are, what, five restaurants, hotel, Lake Forest Apartments, other apartments. Anyway, there's a lot of facilities that go in here. And then there's two forest main sewers that come all the way from downtown Brandon. Basically, everything from North Street that way to the east of Brandon comes around down to the high school, comes back up 468. And as you know, we spent somewhere between four and five million dollars rehabbing a sewer line down there in the last two or three years. So, sewer line was number one project. So, I hear through people, one of those is, well, two of those are sitting in this room. I asked last week Matthew Miller, Sam Hawkins, and Mr. Baker to attend a, we were invited to go to a board supervisors meeting, and I tried to emphatically say, after I heard this the third time, I felt like I needed to address it. Everybody's doing work out here. I rode through, a bunch of dirt work's been done, and everybody was saying, well, the mayor said we could. And I was very clear, the mayor has not said that. And the mayor's not going to say that, because that outruns our system, it outruns your authority, that outruns the planning commission. There are just processes going through. Well, doing that created a lot of angst, for lack of a better word, at the county level. I hate that, and I cannot readily admit to anybody looking at me in here and anybody that might be listening online, there are internal communication problems that we have. I think every organization has that. We're trying to get better. We have external communication problems, i.e. between the city and the county, and this falls to getting a proper, large-scale, bigger than five acres permit from DEQ, which my understanding, this afternoon and this evening, they still haven't done. In other words, they looked at it as, we didn't know we needed to do that. So, according to Sam earlier, and he can speak to this when he gets up, and Community Development, he can speak to that. He and the county engineer, Mr. Parker, are now on the same page, and all that's being done. But the angst that came from that was, you know, I also gave you a zoning map here, so they're going to have to go through a zoning thing and where that property applies to. So, those two folded up pieces of paper are something that's going to have to come before you, and I don't think the county wants to come before you for rezoning, but they're going to have to do that, and you're going to have to find, you're going to have to decide what you want to do at some point in time. Now, at the end of the conversation this morning, there were, there were overtures of, I'm trying to state this as concisely and plainly as possible, there seems to be a move now with the supervisors to reevaluate all of the TIF plans that are in the city for the purpose of modifying, removing, or sustaining the use of TIF plans that are here. Now, board, you all know that this involves a multitude of things. It involves two hotels, and involves multi-use loft apartments, a multi-use building here by City Hall, and involves a grocery store and everything else that might fall into the ergon property out there. So, the county is taking pause and set a meeting to come back on August the first to revisit this. So, I feel compelled to warn you of that, and I also feel compelled to communicate same to developers and people that are looking to invest in Brandon, that those opportunities might be disappearing. So, don't know what's going to come of that. Pause to think it was not an idle threat, but I don't know. So, right now, the target, unless I hear differently, board, and I will keep you as informed as I can, that August one will be a point in time that the county will decide whether or not they want to sustain development in Brandon or not, long and short of it. So, Mr. Baker, is that sufficient? I don't need to beat on that anymore, I don't think?
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Okay. All right. So, with that, Ms. Mary Ann, we will continue with the agenda, please.
Good evening.
The first one, consideration of the approval of a sponsorship agreement between the Mississippi Lottery Corporation and the City of Brandon Amphitheater, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Number two, consideration to approve a resolution requesting assistance from the Central Mississippi Planning and Development District, and showing the city's intent to apply for Delta Regional Authority funds, and that the district is requested to aid the City of Brandon, Mississippi in this matter. The board further designates the mayor to act as a representative of the city in this matter, and to execute all necessary forms and documents on behalf of the city. Number three, consideration of a request to pay the invoice from Pelican Playground in the amount of $178,669. This invoice is for the playground installation at Brandon City Park, which included the labor, materials, and equipment to meet the new PIP safety surfacing requirements. Number four, consideration of the acceptance of the lowest and best bid from Hemp Hill Construction Company, Inc., for the Burnham Road Waterline Project in the amount of $1,498,217, as recommended by Benchmark Engineering and Surveying LLC. Number five, consideration to approve the docket of claims for July 1, 2024, Fox Everett Claims, released on June 27, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. Is there a motion to approve those five items? Mr. Baker has a question.
Mary Ann, the, the contract from the Mississippi Lottery Corporation, can we double-check that? Because this says this for the '24 concert season, of which we're in the midst of.
They're, they're on a fiscal year, so their start's July 1.
Got you. Thank you so much for clarifying that. And is item number two the same thing as what we did under the mayor for five and six? And if so, is it necessary at this point?
This is the agreement with Sam PDD. I think the other was a...
Just an authorization to apply?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
They warned us to specifically sign that resolution.
And, board, I know under number four, that Hemp Hill, Mr. Miller back there is, we're agonizing going back and forth, but there's enough funding left, because we've come under budget on these to do one more project. And what I'd like to look at doing with the remainder of that, whatever that remainder turns out to be, we've had four or five water main problems in the front of City Hall out here on Highway 80, which is, you know, it's not catastrophic City Hall, but it hurts the library, it hurts the police department, it hurts restaurants down through here. So, if we can come up with funding, put a project together, might want to improve that line as the last thing out of those ARPA money. So, that's kind of where my mind's at on that. Unless you've come up, unless you've got something else in mind, we'll do that. All right. So, we've got five items. Is there a motion to approve those from the clerk? Motion by Miss Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Luke Coker. Any further question or comment? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mary Ann. You getting settled in?
Uh-huh. I'm getting in.
All right.
I have some questions.
Hello, Ms. Carley.
Good evening. Can I take all four of these together?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item number one, consideration to approve the utility adjustment approvals and denials as presented by the Public Works Department. Number two, consideration to approve change order one in the amount of $5,500, and allow the mayor to execute the same. And consideration to approve pay request two in the amount of $165,435.86, both from Simmons Erosion Control for the Mary Ann Drive Sidewalk Improvements Project, and authorize payment of the same. Number three, consideration to approve pay request five in the amount of $546,221.90 from Hemp Hill Construction Company for the Highway 80 Signal Improvements Project, Stone Gate and Wig Gate, and authorize payment of the same. And number four, consideration to approve pay request one in the amount of $20,788 from Sullivan Construction Services for the Afton Drive Drainage Improvements Project, and authorize payment of the same.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. Is there a motion to approve those four items from Public Works? Motion by Miss Sharon Womack. Second, Mr. Harry Williams. Any further comment or question? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carley. We got to work on that. Should be about 16 items on the issue instead of four. You got all the light. Now, it was on vacation. We won't talk about that, though. Good evening, Mr. ...
Good evening. I've got two items. I'd like to take them separate, and on two, I'd like to take A and B separate, if possible.
All right. So, wait a minute now. So, you want to take one A separately from one B?
Well, actually, I'd like to take one all together.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And then, two, I'd like to take A and B separately.
All right. Mr. Baker, you good?
Number one, I'm going to set public hearing for the following cases for July 15, 2024. A, case number 24-013, conditional use application for 3004 Dave Circle. B, case number 24-009, conditional use application for 112 Cherry Hill Lane. C, case number 24-007, rezoning request for 101 Pearl Street.
All right. Is there a motion to approve setting those public hearings?
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you talk about things, what we're looking at while we're doing a public hearing? No explanation.
Uh, we're, conditional use application for Dave Circle is regarding an active Airbnb and a carriage house that they have. They made some improvements and went back through the process.
B?
B, that is conditional use application to replace a trailer that burned down. C, to rezone, so they can get a conditional use to operate an Airbnb.
So, is that going to, Mr. Baker, is that going to have to be two things? It'll have to be rezoning request, and then?
I don't know.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So, it's a rezoning, not conditional use?
Mm-hmm.
So, we're going to put that as a, make sure it's clarified by, that's all you know from the plan.
That's, well, I've only received a rezone application so far. They'll have to get a conditional use as well.
Um, is there time, is there time to put it both together? You need to do it together?
I can do it together, yeah. I just need to get the applicant to...
You can bring them in?
I understand. We need to have them apply for it, though.
Yeah, because if they're not satisfied, you can do it all in one...
I understand. I can't fill out the application, though.
All right.
Sharon, I didn't answer your question. You good? Okay. All right. All right. So, is there a motion to approve item one on the community development? Motion by Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Mr. Harry Williams. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right. Number two, A.
Number two, A, consideration to approve the development review applications for the following projects. A is case number 23-022. It's a subway at 904 West Government Street. What that is, is it's a additional building behind the new Domino's and Liquor Store, Bulldog Wine and Spirits, on the same property, on the north side, and we've gone back and forth, confirmed the hydraulic calculations, and basically making sure that that was all handled on the front end. And this is, but they've met all the requirements, parking requirements. They're going to actually have to build another drive in order to make it work back there. So, it would have a drive-through on the east side of the building with parking along it, but that's, that's pretty much it.
And there's going to be enough room for a drive-through, maybe? Okay.
Okay. So, it meets all setbacks?
It does. It meets all of our, yes, sir.
Okay. So...
This is a general...
I know you're asking to approve the development.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's, well, we're not through Architectural Review Board yet, but this is just a general approval of the project. Yes.
So, you're approving the development?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
All right. Okay. Everyone know where it's at? Questions? Is there a motion to approve? Motion, Mr. Jerry Crane, second by Miss Sharon Womack. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. And two, B.
Number two, case B. All right. Case number 24-001, shops at Greenfield at Highway 18 and Orleans Way. And if you're looking at this, I believe that used to be called Elizabeth Lane on the north side of this piece of property. About a year ago, actually, I believe, Mr. David, I think you cleared that property, right? Okay. So, it's that lot there on the south side of Orleans, or what used to be Elizabeth Lane, at the corner of that and Highway 18. And we've gone back and forth on that one. This is also a development review application, so it's a general approval for the project. We've worked through the site. As you can see in the staff report, there's a number of things that they have to complete in order to move to the next step. We are also asking them to move one of their entryways a couple of feet to meet the minimum requirements from MDOT on their right-of-way. So, if those things are completed, then they would be able to move forward and go through ARB and, you know, get a permit.
All right. Everyone familiar with that location? All right. Is there a motion to approve that? Motion by Mr. Luke Coker, second by Mr. Jerry Crane.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
Traffic. So, we can talk about traffic. There's a lot of traffic at the location, so...
Mm-hmm.
How is that not, I mean, because I know it's not just one retail place. It's going to be several, is what they're looking at.
That's right. It would be a restaurant and a few other things, and I'm not sure exactly what that looks like yet. I mean, they wouldn't be able to get tenants until I'm sure they have approval to build it, but if you're asking about traffic impact studies...
Yeah.
Um, we have not, I mean, we have the numbers that were before, you know, retrieved by Jonathan Kaiser on his studies over there. We could look at that, and that could be another condition if you want, because I know at some point, we're going to want to see a traffic study from him. So, if that's something that you want to add, we can do that.
We've already got a lot of cars out there, especially in schools.
Sure. Yeah. Absolutely.
Regardless of the time of day, doesn't, you know, and, you know, I would think that probably some of these shops would not be open at seven o'clock in the morning during school traffic, but there's still a lot of traffic over there all day.
Right. Especially at lunchtime.
Yes.
And at school hours, right. I'm with you, and I think that if that's a primary concern, then we add that to the conditions.
I would like to add that in there.
Okay.
I really would.
All right. I'm going to expand on that, board. I've given this substantial thought. You know, several times, we have asked developments to also supply a traffic impact study. Call your cross, and a good example of that in other places. And I'm afraid we're not getting, it all falls to who's writing the check. So, if we want a traffic impact study on something, we need to be willing to write that check so that we are guiding that, rather than somebody that's slanting something to the person that's, does that make sense to you?
Oh, yeah.
And I'm fine with that, but I just, I think we need to own our stuff, and we need to pay for our stuff. So, does that make sense, board? So, we'll, we'll do that. We'll get to that point.
And Mark says have them reimburse us for the cost of that, but they're working for it.
Well, that kind of still puts it back to satisfying the tenant.
There are things that you require your engineer to review for, as part of the tenant process, that I assume we charge out or something, charge back to the...
I couldn't hear what you said, to be honest, sir.
Yeah. I'm trying to get away from the occupant or the property owner doing that, knowing full well that they're getting a slant.
The data is there.
Whoever's out there working in the world, they're going to respond to who's writing the check in the end, is where I'm coming from. All right. Enough of that. We'll get to that. All right. So, we got a motion, second. Any further conversation or question?
Mayor, and I'm just adding as part of the motion, a second, that it, that the motion is conditioned, or the approval is conditioned upon receipt and review of a traffic control study satisfactory to the city.
Which we will hire Jonathan Kaiser.
And we already have the data, but we wouldn't have for the tenants, right?
Specific to that quadrant of that intersection.
Sure. Okay. We can do that.
Hey, I just had a question, and I'm going to ask this question about every time I come in here about the street lights. Got a call from Cory Baker's office this morning. I guess it was from Alicia Richardson. I think you and Sam may have met with her a while back, and she mentioned it alike. About 90% of our lights that were out are completed, have been repaired, but I still see a bunch of street lights that are out.
And that's going to be on me, too. I planned on doing another inventory on what was out last week and just got too, too busy.
Yeah. Just can we, as soon as possible, update that so we can...
Sure. Yeah. And that's on me. That's in my court. And Luke and I, we've spoken about that, so that's on, that's on me.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, man.
Luke Coker and Jerry Crane. All right. So, we got a motion, second. All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. All right.
Do you have any questions about that other project we were talking about earlier?
Well, no, I just want to be clear that I didn't mistake something about what DEQ requires, and, you know, something larger than, than five acres, and they rather admit, I think someone said it was more, and...
It's right under 11 acres, from what I can tell, but, you know, it hasn't been, we'd have to get surveyors out there to determine that.
Okay.
But, yeah, it's, it's over five acres, so they will need a large construction notice of intent, a permit from MDQ, and they'll need to submit all that when they apply for a grading permit, which, but that'll all come after the zoning, you know, the conditional use, the rezone, conditional use. That's the first step, but...
All right.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Speaking of Mr. Kaiser, what is that for? Are we expecting that?
He was very honest. He believed it would be, you know, you're talking about for the comprehensive plan, the overall city, yeah, it was, it was toward fall. I mean, he said he had that much work stacked up. But we can check with him, if you would, just make a note, write that down.
Yes, sir.
And I, or I'll try to remember. We'll touch base with Jonathan.
I'll touch base.
Maybe we'll have him come to a board meeting and just give us an update of where he's at.
I think we're about four months out, probably, but I'll check, I'll check with him.
Okay.
Get an answer.
All right. Thank you. Chief.
I have three items. Can I take them together?
Yes, sir.
All right. On the first one, I do have a typo on there, and I apologize for that, but the first one should be to declare 83,385 as forfeited funds deposited into drug seizure account and authorized dispersments to Attorney Mark Brand in the amount of $40,000 in the Rankin County District Attorney's Office and the Rankin County Sheriff's Department in accordance with Mississippi Code 4129181.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thanks for the information. And that's what you were saying, right?
Yes, sir. That's what that declaration says. Number two, request permission for Connor Smith to travel to DeSoto County, Mississippi, November 4th through 8th, 2024, to attend the American Law Enforcement K-9 Handlers Association K-9 Seminar. And number three, consideration of the acceptance of a resignation letter from Police Officer Cody Small.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
What K-9 is, you take it?
Kelly.
All right. Got three items from the police department. Is there a motion to approve those three items? Motion by Miss Sharon Womack, second by Mr. Jerry Crane. Any further comment, question? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, chief. Good evening, sir.
I'll take both mine together, sir.
Yes, sir.
Request permission for myself to travel to Natchez, Mississippi, to attend the Emergency Services Administrative Professional Association Conference on September third through the sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Maybe I'm going for maybe backup speaker if Carolyn needs me. Mama says I gotta go, I gotta go. Item number two is request permission to repair a nineteen ninety-seven Pierce Ladder truck for the estimated amount of six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and eleven cents as the emergency repair and authorized payment are the same.
Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve those two items? Motion by Mr. David Ferris. Second by Mr. Jared Crane. Got a question.
We're also doing it under the outside repair statute, right?
Yes, sir.
So emergency and outside repair. Okay, thank you.
All right. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. All right, audience. We're gonna entertain a motion here to go into executive session. Motion by Mr. Lou Coker. Second by me, Sharon Womack. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, board. Now, audience, I'm gonna ask you to exit the room and pull a chair down, if y'all would. If y'all would step over and pull a chair down. They're loose on...